We're in person, not virtual.
Well, the best way to do it is to get rid of what they eat. So hide it from them.
All right, I'm going to call this regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, September 2nd to order. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin as always by acknowledging the land on which we gather as the territory of the Ottawa and Chippewa peoples who have stewarded this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And with that, we will begin with our roll call, please.
Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Warner?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to announcements from the interim city manager, please.
Yes, and I do want to welcome Rebecca Adler. This is her first time assisting with the city commission meeting in her capacity as interim deputy city clerk, so thank you Rebecca for being here. And I told her I've got her back if she needs me help, but it's great to have you here. I wanted to start by honoring our fire department. Last Thursday, there was a life-saving award ceremony presented for four different instances that were really very touching. And we've got our fire chief Jim Tuller here and our EMS administrator Catherine Dunklow. And they're going to say a few words, but I just wanted to say that these weren't just situations where someone survived. These were scenarios where folks were without a pulse for a period of time and were discharged from the hospital with themselves neurologically intact. We had one particular woman who was a survivor because of the efforts of our fire department speak at this ceremony. It was tremendously touching. When she was taken to the hospital by our fire department and her husband and children called her parents in San Diego, they packed funeral clothes. And thank goodness, they didn't need them. I say that because the work that they do is very real and it really matters, and I'm very proud of that work that they did. And I just want to say thank you to them. We have, I will say, survival rates for cardiac arrests that happen at home or outside the hospital are very low, usually around 7% for adults and 12% for children. And we did have a child who was 11 years old, I believe, that was saved. And so with that, I'd like to invite Chief Tuller and Ms. Dunklow to the podium to just say a few words. And thank you for being here.
Jim Tuller, Fire Chief for City Traverse City. Last Thursday was a pretty special day. For those that could make it, thank you. For those that couldn't, you're going to hear just a little bit about it tonight. I'm not a new face in front of the commission. Catherine is, so I'm going to talk about this much and I'm going to leave a lot of my time to her. But I do want to mention, if I wasn't clear in mentioning it last Thursday, whenever our firefighters and our officers train in whatever discipline it is, water rescue, firefighting, hazardous materials, whatever, when we run our drills and our exercises, we train with a mindset that we're going to be successful. You know, we equip our firefighters much with the support of the city commission through the budgetary process. All of the equipment we asked for has been with a purpose and we've not been turned down yet, and we very, very, we appreciate that very, very much. But we train with that mindset that we're going to be successful. It's not overconfidence, it's not cockiness, it's putting yourself where you want to be and trained to get there. And that's largely what carried the day in these four instances. So I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Dunklow, our EMS administrator for further. Thank you.
Good evening. It's really nice to be here in front of you for the first time tonight. Like Benjamin said, I am Catherine. I'm the EMS administrator here at Traverse City Fire Department. It's an honor to be standing here in front of you all to talk about just a snapshot of the progress and direction of our EMS program. First, I want to sincerely thank all of you, as well as the community, for supporting us at the Traverse City Fire Department as we step into the role of primary EMS transport. It's not something that we take lightly. We're deeply grateful for the trust that you've all placed in us, and you've given us an opportunity to make a meaningful difference in how emergency medical care is delivered here at home. As interim city manager Benjamin Marantut recently mentioned, one extraordinary outcome from this year is that every patient in Traverse City who suffered a cardiac arrest with a shockable rhythm at the time of EMS arrival not only survived, but were fortunate enough to walk out of the hospital with their brain function fully intact. So put simply, when someone's heart stops, but its rhythm can be treated with a defibrillator, every single one of those patients was able to go home and continue their normal lives. This remarkable outcome is a direct result of the training, equipment, and support you as a commission and as a community have made possible. To put this achievement into further perspective, across the state of Michigan, not only about 30 and 1/2% of patients in this exact situation with a shockable rhythm, who have a witnessed cardiac arrest, experience a perfect outcome of returning to normal life. But here in Traverse City, our outcome rate for these patients is 100%. It's pretty cool. This accomplishment has drawn praise from EMS leaders and personnel across the state of Michigan and as far away as Florida. But here in Traverse, wait, sorry. This is something we can all celebrate. Apologies. With our team continually going above and beyond, we've made it a priority to recognize their efforts and celebrate their successes. This culture of recognition strengthens morale, which directly enhances patient care. On top of that, high morale improves retention, a critical factor in the continued success of our department and our EMS service. I again want to sincerely thank those of you who continually support us, as well as those who joined us at our recent badge-pinning and life-saving awards ceremony. Your presence meant so much to our department, especially to the members who we were honoring. Your support and encouragement reflect the value this city places on its responders and the incredible work they accomplish every single day. Again, thank you to the commissioners and the citizens of the city of Traverse City for believing in our team and supporting us as we grow into this expanded role. Because of you, we are building an EMS system that is innovative, compassionate, and uniquely tailored to the needs of our community. We are proud to serve this city, and we're very excited for what the future holds here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. And I want to thank Chief Tuller for embracing our culture of celebrating successes. And I will just share, from a personal standpoint, nine years ago, my dad had a heart attack and he didn't live because it took 20 minutes for them to get to him. That's not a complaint against that department. He was in a very rural area, and so this is very, very impactful. And thank you again. And with that, I have less exciting announcements. Just a couple of things. As many are aware, Casson 8th Street traffic signal is malfunctioning. The issue is going to result in about eight to 10 hours of work that our contractor will begin this evening. It should be fixed tomorrow, September 3rd, but I just want to remind everyone that when there's a malfunctioning traffic signal, it functions as a four-way stop. So that's how folks should treat that. And then, of course, next week, on Monday, September 8th, the city will join the planning commission for a joint study session and hear a report on fair housing. And of course, also, next Monday, September 8th, at 3:30 in the afternoon, the city commission is having a special study session at the senior center to talk about goals and key objectives, or objectives and key results, excuse me, and that'll be facilitated by Future IQ. So I'm looking forward to that. And that's all that I've got. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we will now go to announcements from the interim deputy city clerk.
Okay, so the Brown Bridge Trust Fund Ad Hoc Committee will meet on Wednesday, September 3rd at 9:30 in the training room. The planning commission will have their regular meeting on Wednesday, September 3rd at 6:00 PM in the chambers. The Coast Guard City Committee will meet this Thursday, September 4th, at noon at the air station. The Parks and Rec Commission will meet this Thursday, September 4th, at 6:30 in the chambers.
Great, thank you. And I will just let you keep going then with the consent calendar, please.
Okay. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission's staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed there from and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests will be automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar.
And continue through.
Okay. Number one, consideration of approving the minutes of the August 18th, 2025 meeting of the city commission, approval recommended. Number two, consideration of adopting to make permanent traffic control order 724, which provides for reserved ADA parking space on the southwest corner of the Depot View Drive, approval recommended. Consideration of adopting to make permanent the traffic control order 727, which provides for parallel parking on the east side of the 100 block of South Cedar Street, approval recommended. Consideration of authorizing a request from Up North Pride, sorry, number four. Consideration of authorizing a request from Up North Pride to allow for the service of mixed cocktails during its events on the west quadrant of the open space from 2:00 PM through 11:59 PM on September 27th, 2025, in consideration of authorizing the city clerk to issue the related permit, approval recommended. Number five, consideration of adopting a resolution recommending approval of the request from O V. The Farm LLC Bonobo Winery for a new off-site premises tasting room, license for small wine maker and small distiller, and permits for Sunday sales AM/PM, entertainment and outdoor service at 115 Franklin Street, and consideration for authorizing the city clerk to issue a registration for operation of the license and permits at 115 Franklin Street, adoption and approval recommended. Number six, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the purchase order for the repair of a John Deere wheel loader with all costs less a $5,000 deductible to be covered by the city insurance carrier, approval recommended. Number seven, consideration of authorizing a letter of support for Homestretch Nonprofit Housing Corporation to pursue funding for LaO project from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTHA, approval recommended.
Thank you Rebecca. Excellent job on your first time up here. We appreciate that. So would any commissioner like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Fantastic. Seeing none, would any member of the public like any item pulled from the consent calendar? Seeing none.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, the city attorney's reminding ma'am, supposed to ask to take item seven off the agenda. That's the letter of support for Homestretch. I did email the commission about 5:30 this evening that there are some nuances to what MISTHA needs in the letter, as well as some other items that I think we need to work on to position us for success with respect to Lytech funding. So we need to take that off the agenda, and you can expect it at a relatively soon future agenda.
Well, we thought we were going to have an easy motion here, but I will ask our city attorney then, do we now have to treat that as an amended consent calendar, or is it still the consent calendar?
I would say amended.
As amended. Okay. So can I get an "as amended"? Even though we tried, guys.
Sounds good, as amended.
Okay.
Support.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to our one old business item, which is consideration of an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances. This was before us a couple weeks ago, so Lauren, I'll let you kick it off, and then I know Chief Richmond's here as well, if we had anything else, any other questions at the last minute.
I don't have really much more to, sorry, I don't really have much more to say on this. There weren't any questions at the last meeting. I didn't receive any questions in between. This is just one of the amendments that chief had brought forward previously, and we made some tweaks to it based on the comments that the commission had at the time. And so if there are any questions, I can try to answer them, or Chief can.
Okay, do we have any questions, or would anybody like to make a motion? Go ahead Jackie.
Well, I move that amendments to the Traverse City Code of Ordinance, Chapter 670, Personal Conduct Offenses, Section 670.04, Consumption in Public, be enacted with an effective date eight days after publication.
I'll support, and I have a question.
Thank you. Perfect, all right, go ahead.
And it's a question for you, Chief Richmond. It's a question about policy and enforcement guidelines. Do you have enforcement guidelines? Because I don't, I don't want us to get into trouble. If someone is partying in the parking lot at the farmer's market and drinking, they should get ticketed, just like the unhoused person on Washington Street in somebody's, well, on a alley, right? We don't want to discriminate between the partier in the farmer's market and the homeless person in the alley.
So we don't have 100% enforcement policy. It's usually left at the officer's discretion unless there's a directive by me, and that goes for everybody. We give warnings every single day to include the individuals that you're referring to, partiers in the parking lot. It's really left up to the discretion of the officers and the direction of the department at the time. But we do not have a 100% enforcement policy, no.
Well, you might think about it.
But safe to say, I think what I heard you say is that, you know, your officers work to treat everyone equitably, and this won't be selectively enforced just for folks who aren't housed.
Correct. We are trained on fair and, you know, impartial policing, implicit bias, all that. We treat everybody with the respect that they treat everybody else. If we had 100% enforcement, every person that we stopped for a traffic violation would get a ticket, and that's not necessarily the best avenue for everybody involved. So there's a lot of people that if I tell you to, hey, you can't drink here, you need to pour that out and you move along, and they do that, that's the best outcome that we can hope for. Not everybody deserves a ticket or to go to jail. And for me to put 100%, you know, enforcement policy, I don't believe in that.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one more question. You know, in county parks, you're allowed to bring your own beer and drink. So there is going to be signage in our city parks that says very clearly, no drinking?
There are, yes. Where there is drinking allowed per ordinance, you can drink in certain parks, and there's other parks that are not allowed to drink.
And that signage is already in place. If you're aware of where, a spot where it isn't, please let us know, because it means it was removed.
Right. And just one further thing on that, if something crosses my desk, and a violation comes across my desk, and it's in a place where there should be signage and there's not, I will dismiss the ticket. There has to be signage in order for it to be enforceable. That's one of the prongs of the enforcement mechanism.
Right. Yep.
And just to clarify, because we kind of got, we went through this last time when we discussed, the parks, Traverse City parks as a whole, unless they're specified, this does not affect them. This is right-of-way, like sidewalks, streets, et cetera, right?
Correct. We have a separate ordinance for parks and administrative orders for that.
Yes. And then the other question I forgot to ask last week, but I, or last time, but I'm pretty sure I remember the answer. This is part of the ordinances that you were working on, and you did work with the ACLU on this, correct? Were these the ones that you worked with the ACLU on as well, to make sure that it was really respecting everyone's rights through their lens as well locally?
Right. We did, we sat down with them in full transparency. Those discussions were more focused on the other two ordinances that had been proposed, and not really so much on these. They had brought up concerns about the other two ordinances that came across.
However, we did take the feedback from the commission when it was first presented last year, and there was parts of this ordinance that were taken out to address those concerns.
Right.
Yes, fantastic. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Go ahead Jackie.
I think the last time that we had a conversation about this ordinance, I brought up whether we could resurrect the loitering and trespassing proposals for reconsideration, and I think there was going to be a meeting planned of some kind with the chief. I wondered if that had happened.
That has not happened yet, but I took your words, and we will be having that meeting. I will have a meeting with Lauren and to see what we want to move forward with, but I do appreciate you bringing that back up.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, then I think you're free, Chief, and I will open up any public comment on this item. Going once. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Rebecca, you have quite the, you're in for a doozy tonight, so appreciate the work you've done so far, and this is the first appointment now, oh no, this first one we have, sorry, already has the commission. So we'll go ahead with our Brown Bridge Advisory appointment here, and it was ad hoc of Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Treadwell, so if you guys want to share any comments or make a motion.
It's been some time since we did all the interviews, so the, any comments aren't very fresh in my mind, however, the committee did meet and took a vote and recommend that Dan Tholen be appointed to a term expiring October 2nd, 2028, on the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, as recommended by the ad hoc committee, consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Treadwell. And if I may, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Fantastic. And thank you Commissioner Warner for seconding. Any comments on this?
Just to mention that we were really delighted to find someone with the scientific background that Mr. Tholen brings to the group, and I appreciated having an understanding from the commission leadership about what characteristics would be helpful. So I think those portions of the new policy, for me, were very, very helpful, and I think we have a real quality appointee.
Fantastic, thank you. Good job. All right, any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there we go. So I messed up the order here, but speaking of the new policy, we do have, the next is a appointment to the Arts Commission for an ad hoc that has not been established. So Rebecca has a jar with names in it, and she will be drawing three, and that will be our ad hoc. So I think how we'll do this is let Rebecca draw three, read them out, and then if someone would just be so kind as to read the motion with those three names in it, that will complete our order of the day.
I have a question before you do that.
Sure.
Since I sit on the Arts Commission, I am not automatically.
Oh yeah, you are supposed to be.
Yes.
You are.
Correct, yes.
Two.
Sorry, that was my misspeak. Thank you, thank you.
Good point. We're all, new to me too. You read it, for those of us that aren't nearsighted.
Mitch Treadwell.
Congratulations.
It's almost like winning the Lotto.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Stanley.
Commissioner Stanley, all right.
Mitchell Treadwell, Mike Stanley, and Heather Shaw are the names.
Yep. So whoever would like to make that motion, you get to pick the chair.
I move that the city commission ad hoc interview committee be established to make a recommendation regarding one appointment to the Traverse City Arts Commission with term expiring September 15, 2028, and that Mike Stanley, Mitch Treadwell, and Heather Shaw be appointed to such committee with Heather Shaw as chair.
Thank you Kim. Thank you Jackie. Any further discussion on this?
Love appointing people when they're not here.
It is, when we used to pick on our own, it was often ad hocs of, filled with people who were not there that night. So this is a little more fair way of doing it. Any other comments? Seeing none? Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you Rebecca for helping us through that first process here. And with that, we have reports and, well, basically reports. Does anybody have any reports from their respective boards?
I do.
Yep, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I read through the library report, and I found three interesting things. One of them is that Michelle Howard has an idea of a Stormwater Musical Garden.
Yes.
Super cool. And that, the other one was that they had the highest number of behavioral incidents in the month of May since they started keeping track in 2017. So something to think about. But my commission, the Arts Commission, has a lot going on this month. The mural festival begins on September 12th, and it runs through the 17th. The opening is Friday, the 12th. It's at Common Ground, so you can come and meet the artists. Sunday, the 14th, is a day that you can go and tour and see what's going on. There's also events at the library for children to, there's some kind of printmaking thing going on, and Old Town Playhouse really wanted to get involved, so they've got some kind of chalk, giant chalk, you know, everyone can participate to draw on something over there. So you can tour all the way from Orianna to O T P, to Old Town Playhouse. The closing parade is on Wednesday, and that starts at Orianna at 4:00, and everyone can walk the parade all the way down to, I think the copy shop is the last site.
Great.
So I hope to see some of you there.
Fantastic. And I will just do the plug for the Arts Commission social media account, has been sharing profiles of all the muralists, which has been very cool too, so this is very exciting. Thank you for all your work on that. Yeah. Any other reports? Oh, go ahead Jackie.
Just to flag that it's going to be a very busy planning commission agenda tomorrow night. We have consideration of taking a new approach to our regulations for conditional rezoning. There is a proposal that has come in to remove residential density limits in the hospital districts. There is going to be a discussion, a follow-up really, from a site plan approval at our prior meeting that involved commercial facades and materials, and so that, I think, is going to be of public interest, as well as some follow-up on one of the planning commission goals that was set for 2025, which was to improve communication with the community. And there's a proposal on how possibly to accomplish that. So tomorrow, 6:00 PM in this room, please be there. Express yourselves.
Thank you. Good, big update, so thank you for that. Any other? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open up now for general public comment. So anything under the sun, it doesn't have to be our couple agenda items tonight, if you have anything you'd like to make public comment, and please approach the podium.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kelly Busley. I live at 210 East 9th Street. I'm coming here today with just a general comment about the intersections of Lake and 10th near Orianna. I live on 9th Street in that block, and I've had several near misses where I have almost been injured by a vehicle. At one point, a few weeks ago, I actually had to like take a step back to avoid being hit by the vehicle. My first ask is that the crosswalks be painted at both of those areas. I think there are three crosswalks where Lake going north hits 10th, and there's a stop sign, and then one crosswalk where Lake hits 10th, kind of jogging around near the trailhead. The second point that I have a request for is at that stop sign on Lake, if you're going north, trying to get my directions right, going north on Lake, there's a stop sign at 10th. That seems to me the area where there are the most concerns with cars and pedestrians. I think that stop sign is not quite visible. I walked the area again tonight. The park, the parking spots, the parallel parking spots in front of the cafe, I think impede the vehicles driving that direction seeing that there's a stop sign. So I would recommend maybe something flashing. I really like the one at Oakwood Cemetery on 8th Street. And I think that was it. Jamie, do you want to add on?
So Jamie Bolek, I, we're neighbors. I'm on 9th Street. And the same thing, with my dog, there's been almost numerous times, people are driving very fast. One thought I thought was like, I'm no planner, but like a speed bump or something, these people are going extremely fast and taking all of those curves extremely fast, and there isn't any indication in their defense that that's a crosswalk. And so, but yeah, me and my dog have almost been hit probably twice, so. Concern as a neighborhood, and I know it's a concern for Orianna as well. And because there is construction over there, I know people whip around there, and especially with schools starting, and they've done such a beautiful job with all the signage and the, everything at the trail, that it just, like, just had to go a little further. So we're here to support that.
Thank you. I know we don't always respond to public comment, but I do want to say, we heard you. I've made notes. We will take a genuine look at what you suggested, and you're always welcome to address the city commission. We encourage you to do so, but you can also feel free to direct these comments to staff too. So happy to have you here. I just, you know, if you don't want to take up your evening, you can always send us an email. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We even had it in tandem. It was nice to, so it's good neighbors, they shared their public comment time. So is there any other public comment for tonight? So is there any other public comment for tonight? Go ahead.
Evening, everybody. My name is Colin. I live at 611 East State Street, between Franklin and Railroad. I would like the record to show that I am not a party pooper by any means. However, I do have some questions or comments or just general concerns around the build-out that's happening in Franklin Street that was discussed a little bit earlier. This is literally happening in my backyard. So I just want to better understand